We have one, two, three, four, five, six members, right? Am I miscounting? Two, four, six, six. Okay. So we don't need to appoint any alternates. The objective of this meeting is to go through the sign regs. And I went through them line by line today and it took me, I think, an hour and a half. I thought we had had it all under control, but you're right, Kevin. It needs some work. So, do you want to start with the front page or should we go from the back forward?
I think we should start from the front page because then within a few minutes, we'll get to page five and six where that we get into internally lit signs. And we get to a little bit later, the issue of forty-four and Bushy Hill.
Right. Okay. Let's start with nine point one. I think there's nothing there. Nine point two.
Laura, put it up on the screen.
Yeah, can you do that, Laura?
Yeah.
Nine point two. Guys have any comments on it?
I just said, I see words there that surprised me because I thought we were getting direction or feedback from somewhere that we weren't supposed to be using character as a criteria for decision making. And then a few lines down, you have the references to the traditional town image. I'm not sure the traditional town image is is any better or fairer defined anywhere than character. But it may not be as often raised as as sort of a weakness in regulations.
Those are things we have to be concerned about. Also, I I'm concerned, not concerned, just annoyed by something called scientifically based.
It's not up on the screen. We see your.
Yeah, we're seeing your your.
Windows Explorer.
That's depressing. Let me try it again.
The file didn't open, Laura.
Well, it opened. It opened somewhere else.
Yeah, right. Give it a double click or something.
How about now?
No, it's still there. It opened up yet.
Sometimes if you share your screen and there's a way to share like the page, but not the whole screen. So you may only see the first iteration of that screen.
All right, hopefully third time's the charm.
You got two screens?
Only one.
Like when you do, let me see here.
Because when you do share screen, let's see if it lets me do this one. Third time's the charm.
I can see it, but anybody else want a bigger?
Can it be bigger?
Bigger?
Yeah, you're down at the bottom, if you can go to the hundred and ten or.
Good a view.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a slide thing.
Slider down the bottom of your screen.
Lower right hand corner.
Or I think if you pick control and roll your mouse.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Doesn't really like a.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
I gotta go back up to the top.
Okay, let's go back to nine point two A.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to agree with scientifically based. I'm I'm that's kind of weird.
Yeah.
I think we should just delete that scientifically based uniform controls fine.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure about E altogether.
About what?
About E.
Oh, let's take on.
Well, here, first of all, I think we need to be a little clear on what we're taking out or what we're sort of objecting to. If this was written by our town attorney, we paid him a lot of money for this wording. I wouldn't so easily take stuff out unless it's obvious that, you know, either we find it offensive or something, but.
We we can do whatever we choose, I think. I also think that this the last and preserve the character of the town. It doesn't hurt anything, but we can't make a decision on that basis solely.
But Laura, another suggestion is that you strike through at this point or edit so that we can keep track of the changes?
Absolutely.
Reviews, under reviews. Track changes.
Little bit, yeah.
Click on track changes.
There we are.
Okay, that should do it.
I can undo the previous if you prefer.
You could undo it and yeah.
Okay.
Of course, it's up on them. I have a paper copy here as well, so. It just does not like me.
It's not showing the tracking it.
No.
Yeah, get rid of your com. Show markup. It says show markup, right?
It does, but worst case scenario, we can just do it the.
Yeah, just go back to home now.
If you delete that.
Track changes. Show markup. There we go.
There you go.
I'll get there, sorry.
Yeah, kill that comma too. There we go.
Nope.
Too far.
I got this. We can fix that.
Just type in M in there.
There's something with being on Zoom that it's super slow to make any kind of changes on my computer.
And then it probably reacts afterwards because you're on air on an internet, yeah.
Yeah, so I can I'll I'll fix the M, I promise.
Okay. Do we want to change preserve the character of the town or or not?
Yes. I thought we I I think I agree with what Dave said that or Bruce said that I think we're supposed to kind of steer clear of that stuff, so.
It can be in your purpose and intent.
Except the town attorney put it in there.
Yeah, it's under it's only when you're reviewing a specific sign you can't use that. But you can use it as your purpose and and intent.
Okay.
Okay.
This is just a kind of a.
Okay. B, anything in B? I have nothing till E. Anybody have anything there C, D?
No. No.
Okay, E has got the the same questions to whether we should have visual environment, the town of Simsbury seeks to promote.
Well, also, I think what what is the traditional town image? I mean, you have a clear idea of what you're supposed to be basing your opinions on other than a traditional town image.
I think this is referring to the design guidelines document.
Then maybe maybe it should refer directly to the design guidelines document.
But we don't want to improve those as a as a regulation.
Well, this isn't again, this is not your this is just your intent. So I think that's okay as an intent.
Yeah, okay, I don't have any problem with the language really. To move on.
Yeah.
Nothing more on page one.
Right.
On the abandoned signs, I didn't see a definition of abandoned signs.
Abandoned signs normally are businesses that have gone out of business. They have a set period of time in which they have to remove their signage associated with the business. I don't know if we have a formal definition for it or not.
I I didn't see one in the reg and what I'm thinking about and Diane, you probably know this, but there's a particular property in Terriffill on Winthrop Street that is now apartments and it used to be a liquor store. It still has the the sign sticking out. It doesn't say anything on it, but it's still there.
It's funny you say that because he's re- we found a building. It's like it's not a business anymore. He's 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 turning it into a rental unit, so it's interesting.
It's all residential, but it still has the sign there.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's like I don't even notice it anymore. But.
If it doesn't have anything written on it, it's not a sign.
Good point.
But anyway, abandoned signs are prohibited, but we didn't define them anywhere, right?
Yeah, you just make a note of that because as you go through more.
So is that a time based thing or a purpose based thing or? I think we I I think you're right. You have to define what abandoned means.
Well, there are requirements in this code for the owner's responsibility to maintain the sign and a cer- a certain point failure to maintain is going to produce something that's not legible and therefore needs to be removed, whether you call it abandoned or not, or just a lazy owner. Or, you know, a tenant who moved out and didn't tell the owner, who knows? But if they're failing to keep it up to a point where it's not legible and not serving as a sign, then it doesn't matter if it's abandoned or not. It should be ordered removed by the zoning enforcement officer, whoever that is.
Should we should we get rid of that line A? If you've got an unlawful and prohibited sign, you already have an abandoned sign. If the sign is already there, it can't be prohibited and unlawful.
Yeah, it can.
Well.
Maybe this is okay. I mean, I maybe this doesn't need to have the definition here, but it said, you know, so an abandoned sign is prohibited. If you can bring it down a little bit there, Laura.
You don't want to up?
You're basically saying and or prohibited.
The following signs are unlawful and prohibited. An abandoned sign, okay, is unlawful and prohibited. You can't have abandoned signs.
But an abandoned sign might not be.
Well, if it's unlawful, it's it's prohibited.
Right, so it's either unlawful or.
Or both. Prohibited, but not unlawful? Is there a scenario for that?
Sure, somebody just left the sign there.
Then it's unlawful and prohibited.
Well, I kind of wonder about unlawful in the first place because we're not really writing laws. We're just writing.
Well, regulations are.
So can they just be prohibited? I mean, that's I that's that's a good point.
Yeah. So do you want to remove the word unlawful?
Yeah, try that. We still need to run this back by legal, but so just cross that off from.
Yeah, prohibited. Yes, I think you're right. The logic there is is good. We're not in this section defining what's unlawful. Okay, let's move down to we're moving to the next page. I have a question. I don't know. You guys have anything on D E F?
Well, we do need the discussion on the animated signs, flashing signs or signs that scroll or flash text because that was something that you were interested in digital signs. That says they're prohibited, which I like, so that we don't become a Times Square.
It's me, it's me.
Well, animated signs, flashing signs or signs that scroll texture, flash texture graphics does contrast with digital signs. But I think they're not going to be prohibited. What it this is a carryover, I think, from the old older things.
So if we have a gas station and it has a digital sign conceivably in the future, but it's just like a Cumberland thing where it shows the, you know, the member price, the regular price, is that considered scrolling?
No.
Okay.
Currently, though, under your current regs, those aren't allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just I'm just thinking ahead. Yeah.
And yeah, and we're not even allowing them at Cumberland Farms. The only place that we would allow any kind of electronics like that would be near forty-four.
Right, and and I get all of that. I know. I'm just I'm just thinking.
It's a discussion, it's all right.
Yeah.
So any changes in that section?
I'm good with that.
Pardon?
I'm fine with that as everybody else is.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? I have a question in L. What is that?
It's a good question.
Yeah.
I mean, they're prohibited, but I I don't know what it is.
Maybe ones that turn on when you walk by, motion activated. Or any kind of touchscreen sign. It could be covering the video advertising like on gas pumps. But I will look into it further and ask Bob for clarification.
Yeah.
I I think that came from his original documentation from whatever legal association he took these from two different or three different sources, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, I I don't have any problem in prohibiting them, but I I don't know what we're prohibiting.
Right, right.
Unless it's a touchscreen of some sort, but you know that.
But you have that at gas stations anyhow. Touchscreen.
ATM machines.
Right.
But those aren't signs in the.
That's not really a sign, right?
Right.
I just mean the pumps that play the advertising when you fill up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are those aren't really signs that you see from the road. Those are signs that are local.
No, they're not intended to be read from the road. Moving along those. Line M.
Okay.
Line M. I had I I had to look both these up. I wasn't sure. And then I realized what beacon lighting was referring to. I should have known that, but festoon lighting was a little surprise to me. I've not seen that term, but I think I'm not opposed to this, but I think that just about every restaurant in town who's got some form of outdoor lighting is an outdoor eating and dining has got festoon lighting now. So this is going to be something that's going to be sensitive for that.
This is for the sign, not.
Small group.
Bruce.
Festoon lighting. Oh, you're talking about, oh, it could be okay if it's for general lighting in your business, but not for your sign. As long as it doesn't light your sign, it's okay. Somehow I think that's going to be trouble. Yeah.
Yeah, that can be a little confusing unless we like define that better, I think.
Well.
Do we want to define it or remove it?
Like I said, like Bruce said, I'm not sure what.
These are all the things that are prohibited.
Right.
We can control it later on. If somebody comes in with festoon lighting and we say we don't like that.
Yeah, I think this.
It goes over. Pardon?
I just Googled festoon lighting and it's basically like, you know, string lights.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which you're right, you see everywhere in restaurants, but.
Outdoors is what counts. Yeah.
And and it's a sign incorporating festoon lighting. It's like Benny's sign, remember?
No.
Benny's Benny's had a sign that was made up, this was a year or so ago, of of lights in in letters. He wrote script Benny's.
Oh, yeah.
And we said, that's an internally lit sign. You can't do that, I believe. But that would be festoon lighting, wouldn't it?
Yes, or or if you had a a sign outlined, you know, with little light bulbs that kind of went around and.
Yeah.
You know, kind of go around the light and you turn off and on as like, you know, just go around. But I so I I would leave it as a prohibited thing.
Okay. Okay.
The next one is if it's suspended across a public street without the permission of the owner of the property and road, the owner of the the road, wouldn't be that be the town?
Or the state.
It could be the state as well. Mm hmm. Or if it's a private road.
Well, no, it says public.
But it says a public street.
I guess that's why we're saying owner of the property. Why?
If it's a public street.
Talking about the adjacent property, Kevin. I think they're talking about it might go from the firehouse over to Vincent's funeral home or something.
Yeah, so you got to get permission of people on both ends.
I think that's what that means.
Oh, okay.
Well, no. When we fill out the the form that Michael made up, I don't know, a couple of years ago to get permission, the Legion has and the VFW, we own a banner that goes across Hot Metal Street when we're having the parade, the Memorial Day Parade.
Right.
And we have to apply on a permit form that's all handled in the in the land use department, but the state is asked to endorse the approval of putting the banner up there. Town staff actually do it these days, put it up and take it down. But there's no process that I know of to actually solicit the property owners. It's the it's the aerial over the road that you're using, that you're applying for permission to use over the road. So who owns the road? And it's just a more complicated issue when you say, well, who owns the land? Because I don't.
If you're going to anchor it on either end, you've got to have permission to the people that own the property.
Well, the banner that we put up, one of our members is a former guy with the the light company and he got the polls to put in. So there's a special setup for this particular banner. But so the application every year is for the town and the state to approve the over the road thing.
But it's a standard. There's there's two places in town that we allow this, right?
Yeah, there's a spot on Iron Horse too.
Iron Horse and Route ten.
Yeah.
And that and there's, you know, there is a process that you have to go through. So so we do allow it because there's two two places that we allowed. So do we need to make an exception here? You know.
No, in most cases you have to have the owner's permission because the owner puts them up. Town employees are putting them up and taking them down. And if you hadn't properly submitted your forms and if required to, you know, show evidence of insurance, all that has to be in order before town employees will poise your banner and retrieve it, you know, at the end of the authorized period.
Right, but we we do want to prohibit banners from other places.
Yep.
So I think we should keep them as prohibited.
Well, that's an interesting one.
Do you want to disallow banners anywhere else in town across the street?
That's what this says.
Well, do we have a forty?
See, the the problem is we're we're listing prohibited things and then we're including in there the way to get permission. And that's kind of awkward.
No, yeah, so it's only ones that don't have permission are not allowed.
Right. And if you have permission, it is allowed. So perhaps I don't know. What do you want to say? Do you want to get rid of it or keep it?
I think what we're in the what we are entitled to regulate is across the public roads. I think wherever private roads exist, I I don't know why we would be. Is it necessary for us to be regulating banners across private roads?
Well, we are. It doesn't say public private roads.
It does say public.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
It's okay. It's not going to hurt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Roof signs.
Well, roof signs, we've approved some roof signs, though.
Like where?
Isn't there one on Route ten near Benny's? I don't think I really are.
Artie's Liquor Store? No, that's on the.
No, that was on one of the houses there.
Oh, you're right. You're right. That on Sim- in Simsmore Square there.
Yeah.
Next to it, there's a couple of houses and the woman had a some sort of a sewing business or something.
Right, yeah, her business isn't there anymore, but I don't know if the real estate company that took over is using the roof sign or not, or is it just?
There are roof signs in that case. And I believe there's two of them in there.
Yeah, actually, that woman had a knickknacks kind of business.
Okay.
Was gifts, some sort of.
She went out of business, but but she alluded to the other one in saying that she should have it. Well, in any event, do we want to prohibit roof signs? Because they'd be grandfathered, the ones that exist.
Yeah. Yes.
So do we want to prohibit?
It would be a good. Yeah.
Everybody agrees with that?
Yes. Yes.
Anything else in this? Down at T. Billboards and off premises signs. We have a case or two where we permitted signs on the corner of Gallagher Way for the people that are in Mallway. The Redstone and and.
Right. We also did it. We also did it for River View.
River View. So if we're saying you can't have off premises signs, do we want to say that, I guess? How did we permit them? Does anybody remember?
I think I have this vague remembrance of something with an accommodation for River View.
And there was one for the Redstone and and Dennis Jacobs' business to list their properties out of the street. Diane?
I was just gonna say, I would be I would be I would lean towards allowing that because you, you know, you're trying to help people help people find their business, you know, like you you don't want to discourage that. I don't see it being out of control. I don't know.
Well, that's because we don't allow it, so it's not out of control.
Yeah. Right, so, yeah, we don't have much of a way to evaluate the impact.
Yeah.
I guess we can, you know, we can always make exceptions to our regs. The other one that comes up was Realtor signs off. You know, because they put them up at the corner of of the street that goes off of Main Street.
Those are all temporary.
Apparently you don't allow them, though, the feeder signs.
Right, we 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 actually had somebody apply for that and we said no.
Even on a temporary basis?
Yeah, I don't know if that's still in our reg or not.
But I would I would think that the off premises part of it is in our regs. I don't know.
I don't know, maybe billboards falls under the it's prohibited because it's not included.
Well, I could see prohibiting billboards, but somehow there ought to be a way to permit off premises signs under extenuating circumstances.
Oh, I mean, it's it's the same as roof signs, so we've done both.
Yeah.
Although we haven't done a roof side off premise. Although we haven't done a roof side off premise.
Well, maybe that should be another question of. How could you regulate? Off premises signs that that, you know, don't risk becoming a nightmare for us.
Yeah, I would say neither.
I think we should leave these in and and deal with it later on when we try to figure out. Uh, special cases. Okay. Okay, next page. We got prohibited signs and then signs exempt from permits. Yep. Dave, any questions up to? Yeah, I didn't have any concerns about this page. Item E. I just got somehow got hooked by the not illuminated. You know, the the woman in Darafield that put her signs up saying, you know, I don't, whatever she was against. Um, if you had a sign in in front of your house and you wanted people to see it at night. I I don't see how making it not illuminated is gonna pass the free free speech thing.
We have rules on how you limit that, you have to landscape it and so I don't see that that. Being unrealistic to say it's now illuminated, but I also question whether three square feet is enough.
Well, we have to say something.
Yeah, but three square feet's not very big.
I can think of a lot of signs that are bigger than that.
Yeah, another one, Diane, I'm thinking about the unmask our kids.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um, banners that are around.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Really regulate non-advertising signs according to case law. I mean, I'm even thinking about like, you know, how they have the sign during election time, right on uh three fifteen, that's a big sign that she usually puts up. So, and is that falling into this personal expression sign, or is that falling into a different category?
Go ahead.
It does include political campaign signs, but honestly, after reading this, I don't see how you'd be able to enforce it. Okay.
Well, I think we could, can we enforce the um size without enforcing the the content?
You can't enforce content, but you can only enforce advertising signs.
You can have as big of a sign as you want on your property if it says something that's free speech.
If it's free speech, I think it will, it, you could bring it to a court, but there's been precedent before, as long as it's not an advertising sign. It's they're pretty much telling us that it's not very enforceable, if it was outside of the business, maybe. But political signs historically have not been regulated as political campaign signs at all.
Right, but in E, um, how can we regulate the size at all?
I do not know, I will ask, uh, I'd be happy to ask Bob about that.
I mean, they should at least be, if we're gonna regulate the size, they should at least be the standard size of a. Sign that you stick out in your yard, right? That you get printed or.
Yeah, that that's what that is, that's, you know, you know.
Three feet.
Well, yeah, one and a half by two feet or something.
Hold on, we can, we can regulate the size, I'm sorry, what what this is saying is the sign doesn't have to get a permit.
Right.
But we can.
A larger one, they'd have to get a permit?
Pardon? No, I think what it's saying, like the the thing at the end, if it's illuminated, it's gotta have a permit. Right, and if it's bigger than three feet, three squ- yeah, three square. You're gonna have to find a category and get a permit.
So what is an acceptable sign to not have to come for approval?
Yeah, cause three, three, three square feet is very small.
Yeah, and is it, you know, a four by eight?
But I mean, we've had people put up banners, signs in their yards. Under free speech and we can't do anything about it and they're big.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, you know, so, you know, I figured I should apply what's four by eight, so that's twenty four square feet, and we're only saying they could have three.
That's thirty two square feet, Kevin.
Well, I can multiply.
That lately, they've been restricting them to four by four. That's it, yeah.
What did you say, Dave?
They lately, the parties have agreed to a four by four max. Yeah. They were organized parties, yeah.
But I do also tend to think the folks that are putting up like the banners.
Right.
They're not really like checking with anybody there, you know what I mean, like, I don't know if they're gonna fol- follow that same agreement.
If they're going to the troubles, they're gonna be bigger.
Four by eight though. That's a pretty big sign.
Right. But is there something here we want to change? Let's try to.
Well, I mean, I'm hearing that we can't regulate the size.
And so what we've got here is something that we can't do.
Well, I'm not sure you can regulate the size, I mean, Bob did put this in.
Yeah, that's, I think that's an overstatement of some sort. But, well, yeah, they have to get a permit if it's over three square feet, that's the implication here.
But then we're saying, I have the right to put a sign on my property, it's free speech. I can do whatever I want. So.
That's that's not here, is it? I didn't re- I don't remember reading.
No, no, I'm saying that that that's what I'm gonna say to this.
But you have to get a permit if it is exceeds three square feet or it's illuminated. Regardless of what the message is. Right, independent of the message.
Okay.
I don't know, that seems awfully anti-free speech that, you know, you want to get a sign bigger than th- three square feet, you have to get get a permit.
Or.
Very libertarian, I don't know, it just doesn't seem very uh.
Or use a smaller font. I think you'll win if you.
I think we're running into a few problems if somebody says something about it, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, anything else in here, how about?
Well, what what are we gonna come out, I think three feet's too small.
I agree.
Well. What would you propose?
Uh, I would go.
Standard flag.
Three by four?
Mine's three by five, I think.
Well, we know that the the political parties are gonna do a four by eight, so why wouldn't we just go with a four by eight, and that would also cover the unmask your kids sign. Most of the banners that were around during the election are less than thirty two.
Well, four by four, sixteen.
Four by eight. Yeah.
Yeah. So thirty two square feet?
Yeah, but this, yeah, this doesn't say that they have to be removed in thirty days or something. You let somebody put up a four by eight in the front yard, I I think we're risking some some hard feelings.
Well, this happened before.
I know it's happened before, I remember Walt Tommy Mitchell's sign up at the top of three fifteen there, that was, you know, for. Supporters of the then president Barack Obama, it was quite offensive, but. It wa- it was there for a long time and Hiram was sort of on top of it, we had no grounds to force him to remove it, but. It was well illuminated by cars going up the hill on three fifteen in the early evening and evening, head by headlights. So everybody could read it, and it was only about four by four, but I don't know. I think, you know, we might do better just asking for a recommendation from. The writer of this document for a some larger. I I think it would be a mistake to put something like thirty two in, cause then. That's big. People would take that and all of a sudden you'd have a zillion four by eights. Right, yeah. And I think something less than that. Um, would be okay. Uh, bigger than three square feet, maybe, but.
All right, well, then do a four by four, that's half of a.
Sixteen. Sixteen square feet.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, a flag, though, I think it's what, four by six?
Yeah, but the the flag at four by six is the largest flag you can put on a residential property.
Yeah, well, this includes political signs and flags.
And the flags are anywhere from twenty five to thirty feet off the ground. Yeah, there's another part of that regulation that has discusses that down below. Right. Oh, right. Maybe it's right on this page. Right. Well, we 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 don't know what to say there, except we think greater than three feet is.
Yeah, Laura, can you just highlight it and maybe, you know, as a filler, put sixteen, and then we we need to check this with.
Just put a question mark in there and ask a. Explanation and see if we find it compelling. It could be there are court decisions that have already established three feet's an acceptable and enforceable number.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, let's move. How about? F? There's any question, G?
Oh, for non-residential, allow them five square feet, okay. And that's just what your number, your address sign? That's just the name and number of occupants on the premises.
Yeah.
All right, I guess it's okay.
Then a question about. G, isn't G the same as B?
Think the regulatory, yeah.
I mean. Public signs are permitted up above and G, government regulatory signs.
But some public signs aren't regulatory, so directional, I guess, might be the reason for the inclusion.
Exclusion or whatever, you're allowed to have them.
I can't remember the last time we had an issue with this category or anything close to. Anyway, it just seems like they're redundant, but I guess little redundancy isn't a problem. J, um. Security warning signs, these limitations shall not apply to the posting of conventional. Uh, what limitations are we referring to? A warning side, no. Warning sign, uh, you know, that we we shoot trespassers. Or no fishing and hunting on our property. Oh, do you, do those signs, do they have to threaten prosecution if you're caught? Fishing where you're not supposed to fish or? I don't know, this is, but. I'm I'm confused by this.
Yeah, we don't seem to have any other uh information on security and warning signs.
Well, I mean, it could be a high voltage sign, but why these shall not apply to, you know, these limitation, what are limitations?
Right.
Question.
Permit requirements.
No, but this is, this is signs that don't require a permit.
So I. I think there's something wrong with the phrasing there. Yeah, that was my, I have a question mark next.
So if we do allow security and warning signs, what do we allow?
They're sounding like like ADT or, you know, this is, there is, this is a, you know, under secure surveillance or something?
I.
I don't know.
It, security and warning signs, I can understand not requiring a permit, um, the sentence doesn't make any sense.
But do we want a size limitation on security and warning signs? We have it on everything else.
We probably should.
I mean, we're at two, four, five, or three square feet for everything else, but we have nothing for. Not that I've seen a huge one, but.
But how much, yeah, so rather than the limitations shall not apply to the blah blah, I would delete all that and then say, um.
Not to exceed two square feet or something.
Right.
Right.
And not to exceed two square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can always change the number later if it turns out, didn't we?
No, so it should be security and warning signs under two square feet. Cause this is, this is the heading of what what's allowed.
This is allowed, allowed or?
This is exempt from a permit.
Yeah, you don't need a permit for this. So either the way we say it everywhere else, sorry, Laura, is not to exceed two square feet.
Okay.
I I like, can we go just back up to H? I don't have a problem with this, but I'm just go dealing with the size here, so a civil group could put up a sign. Four by four. Um, I'm just relating it to the the free speech. Is four by four better than the three by, the three square feet? Should they all be the same size?
Seems to be a bit of inconsistency on the sizes, you know, like, it's like, like, I mean, again, I know, I don't want to go back to the whole, you know, a political thing or whatever, but. You know, a flag can be up to twenty four square feet, but a political flag can only be up to question mark square feet, you know what I mean, like. The thing is, I think the signs need, the sizes need to be a little bit more consistent.
Well, I tend to make the larger ones smaller rather than make everyone larger.
Hmm, I'm just saying, again, I I could see somebody come and say, well, I've got this flag, and you'd say, well, it has to be X, and they'd be like, well, it's a flag, so it can be Y. So, that's all.
Well, it seems like four square feet is a little small, isn't it, Kevin?
Hey.
Um, well, that's a lot of two by two, um, that is kind of small. Um, but that's just what they can come to us for no, no approval.
Right.
Right. Okay, so that that's fine, they just gotta get a permit above that. Yeah, it doesn't say you can't do it, it just. Right. You know, if it wants a larger, you need a permit.
Laura, what size are many of the um, the A-frame signs, three by?
Two, three by two?
Three by two.
Three by four.
Those are temporary.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, it just seems like a lot of different sign sizes, maybe we could just get a few sizes and like. Like, non-residential is five square feet, but residential is three square feet, and then we're down to two square feet for something else and.
That's cause that's all we can regulate, according to Bob.
All right.
I don't know, I don't know whether we can just get some general sizes and.
That would be a good idea, I think, to be. Yeah, that's what we're looking at, cause it's not three and a half feet by four and a quarter, it's four by three. Or three by three or one.
But we have a different size for like every little situation, which kind of seems. Busy to me. I don't know, I don't. Back of a better word, I don't know.
Again, these are signs exempt from a permit, it's not even, it's not prohibiting them. In in this section anyway, um. How about the flags? How big is the flag that's in Saint Mary, Saint Catherine's Church?
No idea.
It, it reminded me of one of the car dealers' flags that get to be. It it reminded me of one of the car dealers' flags. They get to be huge.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether 35 square feet is five by seven. I think the, I think the St. Catherine's flag is bigger than that. And I'll bet that Toyota has a bigger flag than that down in there.
Well, it's a ratio to the pole. That long dimension is something like, it's supposed to be two and a half times the height of the pole or a two and a half times the length of the flag is the height of the pole. There's a prescribed ratio for these things that designers don't just, you know, sort of make them up as they go along. So there's supposed to be a ratio and if any flag seller can describe this standard.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that you could buy a bigger flag than you're supposed to have, though.
Oh, yeah, you can, but if it's, if it hangs too low, you run the issues, the potential for vandalism and other problems. You know, as well as the possibility that your flagpole might not be, because the flagpoles are remarkably shallow in that the depth they're planted. I don't know why they don't go over, but.
So does that become then we regulate by the length of the pole or do we regulate by the by the maximum size allowed by a 30-foot pole?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if the ratio is something that relates to safety, or is it a visual thing? That at some point the flag looks stupid on a pole. It's only, you know, you take a 15, 16-foot pole and put a flag, you know, that's 10 by eight on it.
But we're all about visuals, though.
Yeah.
But this is just stating that these flags are exempt from our our regulations.
Right, this is, we're not prohibiting anybody from doing something different, but they can do this without asking.
Yeah, for the for the number, no more than two flags per lot in residential districts. So you could have, you know, a US flag, a Connecticut flag, but you couldn't put an MIA flag or something.
In a residential.
Yeah.
Without, without a permit.
Yeah, but you know, that's kind of weird to say for. You know, I don't know how tall a flagpole you would need for those three. But maybe someone else, you know, would put up a marine flag too or something.
Well, when you drive to the McLean facility on Grapevine Road, almost across the street is a retired Navy officer who has one of those things that look like the front of a ship with a cross and three flags and ropes on the, you know, coming down on a diagonal. It's quite an elaborate thing, but he has, they're, they're made for three flags. Now, I couldn't name anybody else in Simsbury, but there is a case of somebody on a residential lot. It's really one big flagpole with some sidearms.
Yeah, so I'm just questioning whether we should limit it to two or allow the three so that Laura's not too good. Going out. Giving enforcement action on these things. I mean, can we, you know, again, we said, you know, on signs, things was, we're getting too picky. And so we just say no more than three signs, no more than three flags per lot.
Period.
And yeah, instead of resident, instead of distinguishing between residential and other districts.
That's okay with me.
So, okay. Not 32.
Got it?
More than three.
You know, I thought on a on a business lot, there was a prescribed two, three flags.
Right. Why distinguish between the residential and?
Well, I I thought that, I mean, I'm not trying to explain Bob DiCrescenzo's thinking, but when I saw it, I thought that it was connected with the presumption that these non-residential lots tend to be larger. So a commercial lot, you know, whether it's a shopping plaza or or any sort of business, it tend to be much larger lots.
Are you going to argue with someone that wants to put up a military flag?
No.
Pardon me? No, you're not going to do that. And, you know, if a big lot, Bruce, if you have a business, they come to us with a site plan, they could put six flags on their site plan and we could approve it. This is without a permit.
Without a permit.
This is signs exempt from a permit.
Okay, got it. It's only three pages in the first hour.
I went fast and it was an hour and a half. So we're going to have to have more than one session on this. The next page, I don't know what vending machine signs are.
I didn't either. I was wondering, is that the sign, you know, if you have a Coke can in front of your vending sign, does that count as a sign?
I don't know.
We're talking about things that are along the street, really.
Well, it doesn't have to be. I mean, that is a sign.
Yeah, but it's things that are seen from the road, isn't it?
Yeah, but you can see that from a road if you had, you know, in the day when you used to have a Coke machine out in front of your gas station.
Now, in a gas station, if you have a Coke machine with the with the internal lit, they're backlit.
Yeah.
Well, actually, back in the day, if the Coke machine was outside, if the machine was outside and it was red, you knew it was a Coke machine. If it was blue, it was a Pepsi machine. That was easy.
So the question is, do we allow a vending machine sign?
I don't know what it is.
With vending.
We have them anymore.
As of, without a permit, that's the point. We're still in that.
That's.
I mean, isn't the whole vending machine a sign? Like, the whole thing? So I don't really know what that means.
Right.
I mean, it's a vending machine. I wouldn't call it a sign.
Yeah, but it has advertising on it. I mean, we are, you kind of do regulate advertising.
And we can't regulate that, right?
Well, you can.
Do we have vending machines outside anywhere?
That's what I was wondering.
Anymore?
Um, they still do.
In New England? You know?
They have them at the outlet malls. It's all I know.
Um, Roethlisberger's has one at the refrigerator.
That's inside, right?
Oh, it's outside.
Oh, no, you're right. There is one outside.
I don't know. I I don't have a problem allowing it.
Okay, well, it's in the interest of moving on.
I say leave it.
Yeah, leave it. Don't know what it is, but we'll leave it.
Memorial signs. And something wrong with that.
Again, the size is a question, is three feet the right size? Bob might come back and say that's our discretion. He can't tell us, but.
I think that's in line with government signs. It's like almost.
That seems to be a pretty standard number for us, as far as signs.
Oh, these are very specific. These are ones erected by the town of Simsbury.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not fine with that. We can do whatever.
Oh, do we need O? Something that's existing at the, already is granted, I presume.
Yeah, I think I read that more than once, actually.
Well, that, Diane, does that go back to the sign that's the non-sign that's in paraphil?
Is that a permanent architectural feature? Yeah.
So what about signs that are a permanent architectural feature that weren't existing at the time of the adoption? So future buildings that have signs on them.
Well, those would be regulated.
Yes.
Doesn't this say that this is all from the day that we adopt this? So like, doesn't?
Right.
So then I feel like that's moot, because we just said that, I mean, if they were existing, then it's fine. No, did I read that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need O, but that's my opinion.
I kind of agree. So let's cross it off and just question why he put that in. Cool, yeah. Beautiful.
Okay, crops growing in a field. I I think requiring that the sign be removed after the growing season is a little overreach in a way.
Well, it's no longer growing there. So what is this? If you put up a sign that says corn, what do you, what do you?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You take it down, corn's gone.
You know, a lot of farm seeding is done through contracts with seeding companies. They buy the seed and they, you know, part of the deal is you put a sign up saying decal, corn, something or other.
Yeah, we don't really have that in Simsbury. I mean, you do in big, big fields. I agree with you. Seeding company advertises their brand, but that, you know. But I I don't have a problem leaving it, but I don't know that we even have it.
I, I, anyway, I that would take out P, other than, because I don't think we should tell people that they have to remove it after the growing season. We don't know what the contract between the farmer and the seed company is. And we're imposing something there that perhaps we shouldn't.
Well, we do that all the time, tell people to do things that regulations are all about.
Yes, but. Anyway.
I don't really see the need for you to automatically permission it, but I don't know that we actually have these. Laura, have you ever run across one of these signs?
I have not yet.
And Nod Road?
Nod Road has them.
Nod Road has them where?
Is this at the farm stand?
I think I've also seen them on their, the Holcomb Road in East Granby on the way to the airport.
Out of our jurisdiction, though.
But they're in the neighborhood.
I was wondering on Quarry Road, I know there's signs. I really don't even read them, like, kind of in that, what is that, that?
Yeah, there may be some at old farms and halls.
Yeah.
No, the ones on Quarry Road are for the quarry, historical signs.
No, I was saying on the right-hand side where they're, they have all the wood chips. You know, just past the the doggy daycare-y place that on the right.
Old Farm.
Yeah, anyway, whatever. It doesn't, I don't know. I don't think, I don't have a strong feeling on this one way or the other.
There, we can leave this. I don't, I don't really care. We're just spending time that we shouldn't. Incidental signs, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. What what is an incidental sign?
By the way.
Including incidental window sign, so there's obviously several versions.
And we don't regulate the size on incidental signs evidently? Whatever they are.
Yeah, I think that's a tough language. I would highlight that one and remove it and see why.
So incidental signs is a small sign, emblem or decal informing the public of goods, facilities, and services available on the premises.
Okay, so that's your ADT thing or?
Okay.
You know, we accept Visa or?
Yes, credit card, hours of business.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, that's fine with me.
That's okay, yeah.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, directional signs that aren't illuminated.
Can you?
Down, down below. Pardon?
Yep. Do that contain?
Temporary signs are covered in a whole section, so I don't think they need to be in this area.
That's what it says. Temporary signs are defined and subject to the requirements of.
This section, but it isn't. It's section 9.8. It's paragraph 9.8. Well, okay.
Yeah, I think the McDonald's signs are illuminated, aren't they?
Saying what?
Oh, the existential.
Directional signs, aren't they?
I think so.
They'd be illuminated.
But these are just saying the ones that are not permitted? I mean, we don't have, didn't have to worry about it. So if it's, if it's illuminated, in theory, that means they'd have to get a permit?
It's, it has to be in the site plan or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, the driveway when you turn into McDonald's restaurant, that has like mini arches that are illuminated.
Yeah, but once you get in the site, there's arrows all over the place.
Walk away, I'll be back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so temporary signs are okay, because it says as outlined in this section. Mistook that to mean this paragraph. Okay, anything else in here? Next page? I didn't have anything in this. We went through this in some detail, I think. Anybody have any comments on these?
No, it's a whole lot of stuff that I wasn't all that familiar with. I think that the staff have taken care of these issues.
I think we went through these the last time we went through this stuff. Okay. Scroll up a little. There we go. Let's get to the illumination. I think that's where the next questions will be.
So C is what? Hours of, consistent with the following standards, hours of operation? Oh, okay. So I, the I and the E there need to be indented. That's, that's what it means.
Yes. Do we want to require an automatic timer?
Meaning we don't now?
I don't know.
Is that a fair statement?
This is something that we, that we added because I don't know why.
Well, it makes sense if you're telling them it can't be illuminated after 11 o'clock unless someone's going to be sitting there turning them off at 11 o'clock, they need an automatic timer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't say that. It says they have to have an automatic timer. It doesn't say.
Well, it says to comply with the intent of this section, but no.
Okay, all right. So they can avoid it if. Okay, all right. So they can avoid it if they really have somebody there.
Yep. So it's 11 o'clock unless, or half an hour past the close of the business. So if you have a bar or something, you can have a lit sign past 11 o'clock.
Right.
Or if you close at two, you can't have a lit sign past 2:30.
Correct.
Which is, okay.
Okay, any other comments on this?
No, but was it just me or is everybody else familiar with nits as a unit of measurement?
Yeah, it's a meter. Take a meter out and put it up in front of it and it tells you how many nits it is.
Well, you learned something new, along with festoon lighting. Getting smarter by the hour here.
Whether five thousand nits is, is the right number is a good.
How do we know if five thousand nits is right?
Is that, is that really an enforceable standard? Yeah.
Well, that's something you can measure. That's.
That's scientific measurement, right?
It's a meter. But you should be able to get down to Best Buy and get the, get a television's, you know, nits output spec.
Really?
I do have some form of illumination reader. I haven't gotten a chance to play with it yet, but I'm totally gonna check it out tomorrow now.
See how many nits all these signs are. So those two, under D, need to be indebted as well.
I'm just gonna fix the formatting back at the office because it's a little.
But I made it tough when I was reading this because I didn't make sense.
So not being all that familiar with this, some of this stuff on this page, but this last thing where it says that they have to have a light sensing device that automatically adjusts the intensity. Is that new? I mean, I can't remember hearing a conversation about that in the past.
That only applies to digital signs, I believe.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. The, the paragraph D indicator above brightness, digital displays are subject to, so yeah, okay. It's something that's only with digital. So there's probably not much, yeah, in Simsbury.
It's like your digital message board or menu boards, excuse me.
What page are you on, Laura?
I was on, I just was scrolling down to seven. Do you want me to go back to six?
Seven is fine, I just skipped beyond that.
All right, so here you're, this is saying that the digital board is visible from the street.
Right. This whole thing of calculating the message duration seems to me kind of another overregulation. Why don't we just say that it has a minimum time of eight seconds? And let the company do whatever it is that's appropriate. What we don't want is something that's continually flashing. Right?
You don't want to multiply the speed limit by five point two eight or divide by three point six?
Right.
I think we should leave that so Laura has something to do.
Oh, believe me, I have plenty to do. Thank you, Kevin.
We will have to buy you a calculator.
I, I really don't care. It just seems like it's a a lot of detail.
I, I think, why don't we just leave it and, and deal with it if the feedback is this isn't working, either a town staff tells us that or?
Do you want the message duration to change though, as far as you want a static mess or message board, or do you want it to change at any given time is the only question I have for that one.
Well, the purpose of having a digital sign is to be able to change.
But every eight seconds is your minimum?
Well, this is a, a digital message as opposed to something else. I don't know.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I kind of see what you're saying there, Dave, about just using number four. Because it's got to be a minimum of eight seconds. If they leave it for two hours, that's okay. Put the minimum, is, is ten, eight seconds the right minimum?
I don't know. It seems to be sort of arbitrary. I don't know where it came from. It probably came from somebody, some other regulation.
Regulation, yeah, yeah.
So did you want me to leave the calculations, remove them? We're not sure yet.
I don't see any reason to remove them at this point, but as Bruce said, let's see what people say about it. We have a public hearing and all this stuff.
Yeah, just for now, could you just highlight that in red so that when we see it, we know that we should at least take a look at this section? Just change your font to color to red. Because I, I just don't want to spend a lot of nit on this.
Okay, let's go on to illumination types.
Now we need to scroll down a little more. All right, so the source of the light must be concealed by translucent covers. We don't do that.
Right. I don't think.
Isn't that the halo lit in the back lit?
Well, it doesn't say that. It's just externally, where, where are subject to, the source of light must be concealed by, so.
Isn't that internal light? At that point?
Well, it's in the section for external.
Yeah, this is external.
But it's concealed by a cover, so now it's inside. Right?
Well, no, it's a separate thing, separate light, like one of the ones above, the gooseneck lamps that come down.
Yeah, so why, so that gooseneck lamp is not a translucent cover?
Right.
I don't think we need that, do you?
Well, I, I certainly wouldn't say that it must be concealed, translucent, it could be. I don't know what the opposite of solid, whatever the opposite of translucent is.
Opaque.
Opaque.
Yeah, opaque is, is a gradient, a gradient different, but it would still produce, you know, light would pass through opaque as well as translucent.
Not really. It's the definition of opaque.
Well, a solid color is the, is the far end of some sort of sequencing of gradients.
Yeah. I think that's an attempt to, I don't know what it's doing, but we, we ask people to put lights and, and bury them in, in hedges and things like that.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I just compare it to what our current reg is there. I didn't do that.
Again, this needs to be indented because it's a
Yeah.
It's a little confusing the way it's set up.
So we, we don't know whether I is new or is it something that we require now? I don't remember us requiring anything like that.
Well, we, we do say that the source of light has to be concealed.
Right.
So you can't just put a spotlight, no?
Right.
But I, I guess I like to look at, I compare it to what our current reg is because I.
Why, why don't we just take out trans, by translucent covers? I mean, the source of the light must be concealed.
I like that.
Leave it up to them to figure out what to do.
Sounds good.
So remove by translucent.
How many options are there to cut, to conceal? Yeah. Okay, let's just do that. Take off the concealed by, the three words by translucent covers.
Got it.
Right.
Yeah, the next one says it's got to be shielded.
Well, moving right along here.
Under internal illumination, we say that it must be static and intensity. Didn't that previous paragraph say they had to change the intensity depending on the time, day or something?
That again is a digital display, I think.
Yes.
Oh, okay, great.
Which we're gonna get to in the next section, three here.
So. I'm, I'm in favor of this, under internal, internally illuminated signs, the 850 feet from Albany Turnpike. But when I was looking at this, I'm thinking that our objective is to provide the opportunity for businesses and owners of the shopping center that's east of Bushy Hill Road and 44. And also the business is right along 44 as well as Hoffman's, at least some of their stuff, maybe all of it. But what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, I don't know if you know this, but in, in the area, as you go south on, on Bushy Hill Road, as you start approaching 44, the, you come to a side street, Bushy Hill Lane.
Yeah.
And, and Bushy Hill Lane is opposite the sort of parking areas for the mall shopping. And it's after the driveway or the, or it's at the cross point of the driveway into the shopping center. And what I'm thinking of is there are seven houses along there. Two of them are before the driveway and five go as the total, when you get to where West Mountain Road comes in, there's another traffic light.
Right.
There's five residences in there and then just before Bushy Hill Lane. What I'm concerned about is, is can we find a way to keep those folks from being exposed to lighting on that other side of Bushy Hill Road, that if we use the language that's here, it's not going to matter. They're going to be able to put the same kind of lighting on the west, east side of Bushy Hill Road that they could put on Route 44. And I think that what we don't want to do.
Not on the east side of, that's, that's not B three.
The east side of, east side of, of Bushy Hill Road is B three.
I'm sorry, the, the west side, east side, yes, sorry.
And the, the west side is from where West Mountain hits, between there and where the bank is, I mean, in that corner. That's B three.
Right, on that corner.
Yeah, but the residential zone is the east side of West Mountain Road. And the west side of Bushy Hill Road is residential in there. And so if we, if the language that is here is, is adopted, then it creates a potential issue and a disadvantage for those guys in the residential properties that are the seven houses. The first seven houses, if you, simply, more simply stated, if you were going to be going north on Bushy Hill Road, it's the first seven houses on Bushy Hill Road on your left. They're going to be exposed to some types of lighting that are not currently allowed.
Right.
And so what I was saying.
We're only off, we're, we're making digitally, digital signs possible there.
Yep.
It's not like we're permitting
Internally.
Giant, giant things.
We already did allow some internally lit signs in those shoppings in the, in the old mall. As an exception, we did that already. They're kind of down facing, so the, the 850 feet, I think Mike said, takes us right through Stop and Shop.
Yeah, right, right. But it doesn't distinguish the residential properties.
Well, yeah, no, no, it has to be B three.
Just going up back to sign illumination on number F12. They have a certain amount of light that can be detectable from the boundary of any abutting property. Maybe that will solve that problem. I can scroll up to it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So perhaps that's it's on page six, right here?
Yeah, so it's point two foot candle.
Candle. That should help with the spillover to abutting properties.
Right. Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah.
I don't know if that addresses the concern, but.
Well, we're, we're permitting digital signs that internally lit that weren't permitted before.
Right.
But we haven't changed, I don't think we changed the level of of light and impact on adjacent properties.
Uh, maybe that's something that we could just make sure of before we do this.
All right, note that, please.
I made a note to myself on that one.
So this does mean that they, I think it's a Shell station on the corner, is the only gas station in town that would be allowed to have digital gas prices on the pump.
Right.
Yep.
I, I guess that's not an unfair advantage for them.
What's the mobile station across the street have, do you know?
I don't know, but that's Avon.
I know, but maybe we're permitting them to compete for them, I don't know.
Oh, okay. They could change it by the minute.
Well. As long as it's not more frequent than every 10 seconds. Gas is going up, I'm not sure that. They might be complaining about.
Price control.
By the time you drive in, they could change the price. Do we, do we know what Avon regulates in that area? No. We can, we should, we should check that. We should be consistent with.
Let's look at that.
You know, if they don't allow digital, then perhaps we don't allow digital.
We, we do have to submit these proposed zone changes to the adjacent towns, right?
Advance. It's probably Bruce didn't look it up.
Actually, I didn't have time. I was thinking about it, but.
We're not done. We're, this is gonna take a little while.
Yeah.
Right.
No, Avon is not easy to look up. They have such an elaborate zoning code. It's, it's a challenge to find anything, really. Because it's covered. It, it's there, but we're.
Can always call their planner.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Okay, are we ready to move on from this section? Electrical standards. Under C, we're saying that you've got to supply underground power. What about solar and batteries?
Yeah, I think a lot of signs are solar these days.
We would like, well. I guess we don't, if it doesn't need power, it doesn't really apply anyway, but. We don't say that you can use power solar here.
Dave, you do notice the last sentence in this paragraph five at the bottom of the page where it says, the last sentence says vegetation screen shall not be employed to service the primary means for controlling glare from lights. But anyway, there's plenty of options listed above, which I'm sure what we tend to arrive at for solutions these days, but. Okay.
That's because the vegetation screens can be seasonal.
They can die too.
They can feel the light source.
Yeah.
Not the glare.
There's no measure of that, is there?
Are there light glare?
Glare, yeah. We have measures that said light can't spill off the property, but.
But there was limits on how much light hits the sign somewhere. Oh, this is, which is this, this is. Under what section is this?
This is in general.
Yeah, well, five, is that for every light for an internally or externally lit side? It would have to be externally lit because you wouldn't have cutoffs.
That's still all under sign illumination.
Yeah. If you can go up, wasn't there standards at the beginning about?
The point two foot candle of light detectable at the boundary?
Well, that was at the boundary, but what was it? What was it be on the actual sign? Wasn't there a limit there?
There, it's not, it does say they should be neither be visible from the street right of way nor cause glare hazardous or distracting to pedestrians, vehicle drivers or adjacent properties. I'll scroll up to it. It's on page six, under F. So. Maybe right here?
Yeah. How does that jive with five?
Well, five is telling them how to achieve it or how not to achieve it. And it really doesn't say anything other than you can't use vegetative screens to serve as the primary means of controlling glare. The others are all options of ways that are usable.
Well, and actually A here is actually light sources to illuminate shall not shall neither be visible. So it's the source that's not visible, not the light. I don't know.
But it also can't cause.
Yeah, okay.
That's, isn't the light, light source the same issue as before that? It's not, it's the light bulb, it's not the fixture. So, you know, if you cover it with an opaque, no, a translucent cover, then your, your source is invisible.
Right, but then five here and the glare control.
I'd say if you, if you meet B on, you know, just below this on page six, it says no more than point two foot candles of light can be detectable at the boundary of abutting property. That's, I'd, I'd say that eliminates a claim of, you know, problematic glare.
I don't think so.
Property if the candle power is point two or less.
I, I don't agree, Bruce, because the measure of that. I don't think you can measure glare that way. That's the intensity of the light. You put a meter up.
Right.
It's going to be point two foot candles. But if you're driving and it's blinding you, it's, it's like a flash or a reflection or something that's hitting you.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't register point two foot candles. But it would be distracting and so I think leaving this in here as glare control is okay.
Yeah.
The way it is.
Okay, signs in residential zones.
Only do we want to go tonight, just added, asking everybody.
I'm just looking at my watch as you said that.
Oh, yeah.
It's 20 minutes of nine.
Yeah.
So I, I would say we we had to give up because we're only at page eight. So I think we need to schedule another session.
Okay.
I mean, you get bleary-eyed after a while.
Yeah. Okay.
And we got a couple of other items we want to cover.
Okay.
So let's, let's suspend this workshop and plan to pick it up sometime in February. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
And there's a couple of items Laura can chase down more.
We'll try to get some answers.
Okay. Let's do our general commission business. We have the accessory, what am I doing here? Oh, yeah, the accessory dwelling units. Laura has put together a letter, a draft memo to the zoning commission for the Porter Selectment. And she's got the draft of the resolution that we passed. So we need to discuss those. Let's first say that, let's, can we look at the resolution first? Laura, can you put that up?
Yes.
Does everybody get a chance to look at this? Maybe we don't have to put it up if everybody's happy with the draft language here.
The resolution is a resolution that we approved.
This is the resolution you approved. I just popped it on letterhead.
Yep, so we can't change that unless we.
Just want to make sure.
There, there's a spelling error that needs to get fixed before we hand this out. We could ignore it, but.
Correct the spelling error.
It's in the fourth, fourth paragraph. Fifth line down, sixth line down, the word possibly of unit size, scaling with the possibly of unit size. I think possibly is supposed to be possibility.
Possibility. Good point. That is an easy fix.
Okay.
That's what. Okay, and then. The next paragraph down where the first line refers to two thirds majority. And this comes up in the draft letter too. I think that we're missing something that suggests that the two thirds, so four out of six is the target. And what it should be saying is that we need a minimum.
I have to change, you changing the actual text in this because you already voted on this at your last meeting?
Well, then we're going to have it in two different. Personally, I'm not going to support passing that along in the draft letter, but I'm the, maybe I'm the only one who is concerned.
That's what the reg says.
But it's a mistaken message and we're just perpetuating it.
What's the mistaken message, Bruce?
Well, a six oh vote is a great outcome too.
But that's, that's ratifying it.
But it doesn't say ratify and let it go at that. It says ratified by a two thirds majority.
Well, I think in any colloquial thing, it's interpreted as at least.
As a minimum, that's the minimum, not.
It doesn't say that. It just gives the impression that's a target. Okay, well, let me ponder that.
You ponder that. I think in any English class, we could fix that, but the meaning of it is really at least two thirds.
Well. Moving along here.
Okay, let's move to the memo.
I found the chart helpful.
All right, what'd you say, Kevin?
I found the little chart interesting and helpful. I think we've done, we've not approved seven in. When did it start? 2009?
It started in 2002, but I only calculated back to 2009.
But actually, some of the ones that weren't approved, did they get approved by court afterwards?
One of them that wasn't approved.
They could have. I believe there is at least one. I know one that was denied twice.
I I wasn't, I didn't understand why the calendar starts with 2009.
Just as far as ease of calculating this, that took me a very long time. There is no list of accessory dwelling units in town. I looked, I had to go back through the years and count the applications through the minutes.
Limited by her time.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, that's. I get it.
Okay.
My, my point is more to the, more to the point, we, we're trying to promote a point of view here and a level of understanding by this document. And I think what's missing is the statement of what? One of the things that we don't want people inferring is that we only started in 2009 with ADUs. And at that point, we have a long history of accessory apartments.
I think you're right, Bruce, and Laura, I believe your comment was that it was you were limited by the time that you had to deal with this. If you had more time, could you go back to 2002?
I can certainly try. The further back I go, records keeping gets a little more interesting. I believe I started 2009 because that's where the minutes were still located online. But I'll double check and see what I can do. I will try to get back to that.
I, I don't, personally, I don't think it's important that you do that work. I think what's here is enough, but I think it needs to be clear that this is an illustration of the level of activity. But there should be a statement here to the effect that.
Right.
Make clear to the reader that the practice of approving, you know, you know, additional, whether we call them accessory dwelling units or more commonly, at least for a period of time, they were called accessory apartments. Because I know I voted on some in 2009. And excuse me. No, that, that isn't, I, I had experience with my first term on zoning. I did vote on one in 2009 too. And if there were two in 2009, I voted on both of them. But I had an earlier term on zoning and was voting on these issues in the term that was 2007 to 2011. So it goes back in my experience earlier. So I don't want to get, I don't think it's necessary to really dig all the way back. How, how far back do we go? But we have a history and a commitment to providing for those who, whose needs, you know, can be served by accessory dwelling, whether they're in, you know, adjacent to, you know, within the primary dwelling unit or if they're, you know, detached.
So perhaps.
I've said enough, I just, you know.
I also am concerned though that if we approved ADU regulations starting in 2002 and omit 2002 to 2008 in our table, people are going to look at it and say, what's going on?
She just adds something that says, you know, this table illustrates the data that we have on, in, on electronic file or something that's to show our, our response to requests in the past and sort of that just sort of addresses of why it starts at 2009 versus 2002 without making Laura go all the way back.
Right, well, at least we should do that, I think. So let's add the reason behind this. They write a statement that says that this, the table below shows the approvals from the year 2009, which is the first one that we have online in the town's online records.
We can also throw in although that we have been, we have approvals from as early as 2002, right?
Yep.
To show that history, yeah.
Well, they're in the.
Have that above, okay, yeah.
They're in the town clerk's office, I don't know. I kind of like, would like us to find the, what's happened in the interim, just so it's not missing. But that's just me. The other thing that I think we should do is to reference Laura's document that shows the existing zoning regs and the state statute impact. We'd like to attach that as well.
Okay.
Before we, let me just take 30 seconds more on this other issue. That I don't, I don't understand what happened in 2002. Why is 2002 significant?
You passed accessory dwelling units in June 24th, 2002 as part of the zoning regulations.
Yeah, but we were doing accessory apartments, which were a different word set, were the same thing in years, many years before that. That's my point. It's not, it wasn't new in 2002, it wasn't new in 2009. You know, but I, I understand the 2009 because I mean, I don't understand why the minutes of the zoning commission are on our, on our homepage beginning in 2012 and the minutes to the meetings begin in 2009 and as you point out, 2009, why is that? Our practice, I can assure you, I was on the zoning commission back then, before 2002. And we were doing accessory apartments. So it's, you're creating some misunderstanding here. We've been doing it for decades.
I don't know that that's true. We, Laura says that the zoning regs, one of the. Laura says that the zoning regs, one of the additions was on that date.
Yeah, I know.
And.
It was.
The implication was that they were not, they were not in existence before that.
And I'm, I'm here to tell you that's not true. We, we were approving accessory dwelling units under a different name, quite likely. Maybe it's recording the name change or something.
Who was doing that? You're saying the zoning commission before 2002?
Yeah. Yeah, that we had people applying for permits to use space within their house as in-law apartments or accessory apartments before 2002.
Okay, so maybe that's.
It's a misunderstanding is what it is, but I'm just trying to ensure that we have at least a common understanding of ourselves. This was no new practice in 2002. It was, it's been a longstanding practice in the town of Simsbury. And maybe not 50 years, and certainly not back to 1935 with the original zoning regulations. But it's been going on for a long time.
Are you?
You could just say that, you know, here's a sample we did the last 10 years. And here's what it looks like. This is the activity in this category for the last 10 years. Just pick a decade. It just gives a flavor for how active it is. And some people are going to say, well, you know, there wasn't, they didn't understand, or they were afraid, or your rules have always been too stringent. And that's why they don't. But if we're trying to give a flavor for something, I think, and I think it's a good idea. I, the simple solution here is just, you know, do 10 years worth and call it the last decade. Here's the information for the last decade to give a feeling for how much activity we've had in this area. And unmistakably convey that the town has supported, the zoning commission has actively supported accessory dwelling units for a long time.
Laura, are there old regs in the books of the old regs in the department?
That's where I sound like.
Yeah. See, I, I don't, I don't, I loaned mine from that first time I was on the zoning commission. I loaned it to somebody and never got it back. And that was a mistake.
Yes, but shouldn't we be able to find the, the zoning regulations that existed before the modification of 24
We certainly should.
24, 2002, and see whether or not in-law apartments or accessory dwelling units are referenced in them.
Under some name, yeah.
And, and I thought that's what Laura did.
They were formally adopted at that date. I'd be happy to give, make a copy of the regulations and send them to everybody and put them in the Dropbox from before and after and see if I missed something perhaps. But it, it was formally adopted as accessory dwelling and, and added to the regulations on that date in 2002. Perhaps they were allowed and they just never referenced it as, as not allowed, and I'm missing it somewhere within the, the full body. I did not read the entire book of regulations from the year prior to it.
Well, one year is not going to make much difference, but I don't, I don't know how often the, the regulations used to be redated.
Well, I don't, I don't want to have us say that they were adapted June 24, 2002, if in fact prior years, in prior years, the zoning commission was approving in-law apartments. That, you know, that's cuts us off. But I also want to be, make sure we're right. And all these records are in the town clerk's office, so should be able.
Very, very, that's, the minutes are there, but you really want to look at the book of regs if you can tell from the regs when they were changed.
Well, the agendas are there, too. You should be able to look at the zoning agendas.
Well, that's what Laura was struggling with. You have to go meeting by meeting by meeting. And look at the, and the agendas are shorter than trying to read the minutes, but from 2009 to 2012, you know, there is no easy access as far as us people who don't work in the clerk's office, there's no easy access to the, to the minutes. They're not online. All right, I got that backwards. The agenda is not online from 2009 to 2012. So you can't shortcut, which we have to read, you know, every, the minutes for every meeting in that period of time, but subsequent to that or following that period, you could get what we're looking for just by looking at the agendas.
Okay.
You know, you wouldn't know the outcome. You would just know if that, that, that meeting had a decision on that.
Right. But so let's look at the paragraph that starts with zoning regulations within Simsbury has allowed for accessory dwelling units and residential units for many years. And with data that's available through the town online records, the table below was taken from that data that shows the approval since 2009. And change that paragraph so that we don't make ourselves look like, you know, we're missing something.
You might actually, maybe it's enough to poke in there that this information is available to anybody who wants to look at the zoning commission homepage on the town website.
Right. So can you edit that for us, Laura?
I can certainly try to get everything that you just said in there. We might have to replay this once or twice more, but.
Well, I just, I don't think we should pick a specific date if we're not absolutely sure that that's when it started.
Unless you can find out that there's, you know, what the, what the reg was before 2002, but I don't think it's bad to say that we allowed accessory dwelling units on 2002. That's 20 years ago. That's better than saying many, many, you know, three.
Well.
Perhaps it's just simply it was formally adopted within the zoning regulations to allow for accessory dwelling units since June 24, 2002?
And then in the statement, I mean, somewhere that terminology started to come into fashion.
Yeah.
Might have been something before that.
It used to be in-law apartments. I mean, I don't know that that's what the regulation says, but said. I don't remember it, but I, I would volunteer my own time to go down and look at the see if the town clerk's office has a copy of the zoning regulations from, you know, 2007, for, for example, and I'll look at it myself.
2007, you know.
What?
It's in 2007.
Oh, excuse me. Right. No, we don't have anything on 2007.
Oh, for counting the years?
Oh, 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 right, right, right. Yeah, I, I missed saying that. I should be asking about 1997. Or, yeah, something before 2002.
I believe the language in 2002 was accessory apartments.
Yeah, right.
For what they adopted, the formal language on it was accessory apartments. I'd be happy to, I will throw the regulation anyway in Dropbox in case anyone wants to take a look. But I can change the wording however you like.
Because I can understand why we would change it from in-law apartments to this, to be more inclusive. We should see if there was anything in the regs before 2002.
Yes, I agree with that, Kevin.
Okay.
Well, let's do a little more research. Let's not.
Let's do a little more research and table this for the time being.
That, that one issue, right?
We'll table this, this memo.
Is there anything below the table?
Yes.
There is some.
Text.
There's a page two.
Page two.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think we should add something referencing Laura's memo that compared the statute with our current regs.
You just want me to put the chart in this memo?
We don't want to do any more work on taking it out. Right?
No, I think just the memo that you, that you put together was pretty self-explanatory. I thought it was a good job.
Yeah, so you could just reference it, Laura.
Okay.
Just like you're going to, you know, reference the reg and reference the, the comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah, the resolution we approved.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I just had another thought on sort of the content and you know, it's clear in the memo that we intend to use this time to review the regulations that relate to ADUs. But I didn't, I didn't know if that was clear enough that, you know, we have the next X number of months, or maybe there's no time limit now on us. If, if our resolution is approved by a two-thirds majority of the, of the Board of Selectmen, then there's no time limit on our effort. But I think it's helpful to have some sort of indication of a timeframe that we intend this thing, this review to be done when in the next two years? The next six months?
I don't, I think that you run the risk of.
Somebody might hold us to it.
No, you, no.
I think that's a good thing.
Run the risk that the selectmen will hold their decision on this until we finish that.
Well, that is too late.
I know. I mean, you don't want to give them a good reason not to act. And they're going to have enough pushback from a lot of people. You know, we got, what, 50/50 for and against? So it's going to be a big discussion heading for them.
Yeah.
It won't be a one shot.
Well, so they need, they need as much supportive information. And I think if we don't give them some sort of timeframe, if I was one of them, that's the first thing that would be on my list. When are you going to have this done?
Well, but we can always, the benefit of opting out is we can always change our regs.
Right.
That's true.
And, and without that, we can't.
Oh, yeah, we have no control.
Right, but we, we were also free to do nothing.
We are.
But that's what we want.
No, I don't think that's what we want.
We want the freedom to choose.
Yeah, I mean, it's our intent at this point to, to, to change them, to modify them, but.
To review and modify is our intent, but.
But we do, that should be done on an ongoing basis as, as situations change. Whether it's 600, you know, 400 square feet, 600 square feet, 800 square feet, 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet, that will change over time.
That changes over time. Look at.
Just as it changed from 1,000 to 650 or 600 or whatever.
It could.
Two years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Look at, look at the application for the iron horse apartments. They're luxury apartments from 3 to 600 square feet.
$2,000 a month, which they neglected to mention when they presented, but whatever.
Well, I saw the article in the paper referred to them as luxury apartments.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, the luxury apartments being built there.
But there was a big thing in the paper this weekend, I think it's the New York Times Real Estate section, talking about apartments that are renting, that are 3, 4, 500 square foot, that are million dollars plus apartments. And.
They're, they're selling at that price in New York.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we're not saying that you have to build, right now, we limit you to 400.
600.
600 does.
Well, I mean, is the question, is the question then that the Board of Selectmen needs an idea of what we have in mind to respond?
That's kind of what I was getting at, Donna. I just, I don't know where to, to stop in terms of, I understand we don't want to give them too much because then they'll ask more. But if we don't.
Are they going to be okay blindly voting on yes or no? Not having any idea of what our reaction to the law is, right? So.
Right.
I mean, I would want to know if I were voting, well, are they going to totally, you know, not allow this kind of thing? Or are they going to come up with a reasonable response or something like that?
But see, this is what our response has been. Look, we're, we're we're approving ADUs as we go along. We've modified our regulation in response to people's public input. And we'll look at it again because we think it's an important thing.
So maybe we just add a sentence that says that.
But we need to be able to do that as we go along, not, not get a state mandate blocking us.
Maybe if we just add a sentence that just basically says what you just said, you know, the zoning commission intends to, you know, evaluate and, and continue to evaluate the ADUs to make sure that they accommodate population as it changes and grows, or something like that.
But we do say by keeping the regulations at the town level, the commission will have the ability to adjust and modify the regulations as appropriate without being locked into what state is determined.
I'm just saying, maybe we could just say that, and we intend to, like, and we plan on doing an evaluation this year or something like that to kind of just indicate that we intend to look at them.
I would just kind of add is that there's a whole group of people in this town that are very, very involved and invested in increasing the size of ADUs throughout the town. And I think that they will be pushing the Board of Selectmen for zoning to move quickly.
Yeah, that's, and, and I'm, I get that personally, and I've, I've heard enough of it, but, and I believe it, but I was thinking whether it, maybe it's too much information, but we, this communication could include, for example, the commission regularly is tweaking all of the regulations and most especially the ADU question was one of the things that we addressed two years ago or three years ago. And we could put in, I don't know what the, I don't remember what the facts were, but I don't think we had any members of the public show up at the public hearing to provide any input. Zero.
When we went to 600.
I know, but we went to 600, Dave, because I checked with surrounding towns, Granby, Canton, Avon, Bloomfield. And we looked at what was the common number. And the common number was around 600, and we were up there at 1,000. So we said in lieu of, you know, no input from anybody or no compelling input, we opted to make it smaller to get in line with the other valley towns.
Let me, let me propose something different. Suppose we were to set a task for ourselves of making the size evaluation or revaluation in March and proposing a modification, if any, to our existing ADU unit or language. And passing that and then submitting our memo and resolution to the Board of Selectmen. Sounds to me like the sense of some of the people in this commission is we ought to maybe think about making attached ADUs one number for square feet and detached some other square feet. And let's have that discussion, make the changes, and we can do that in the space of two or three meetings. And we could have that done by the end of April. And that would give the Board of Selectmen a solid answer from us as to what we're doing about these proposed things and give them nine months to decide.
I think it would show good faith. I mean, we say we're going to do it, but I think it would show good faith that we're actually doing it.
Let's do it.
Well, yeah, but, yeah. I'm, I'm not objecting to doing it. I just want to make another point that the timeline's not, you know, it's, the months are ticking away already. And I thought that the, the date of you're stuck with it if you did not opt out, the opt-out date is, is November sometime.
No, it's.
No, it's January.
January.
It's January 1st?
Yeah.
Because we don't get it done till April.
That gives the selectmen six or eight months.
But if it doesn't get ratified, there is no more time to go back. Just remember, they have to run a public hearing process as well for this. So they can't just vote on it and ratify it. They have to publicate, they have to do their. So they can't just vote on it and ratify it. They have to publicate, they have to do their publications and do, just to let you know. So the further we push it off, you shorten their times as well, whichever the commission decides.
But you know, looking at the number of applications we've had, I mean, there's not a big demand for these.
Um, I think you're going to be surprised when you, when that there's probably much more of a demand right now in certain areas for certain, for not necessarily in-law apartments per se, which is what they are, but for housing for people who have disabled youngsters. And they're very active and they want movement on it and they want movement pretty quickly.
And they can do that under the current reg.
Yeah, but they haven't been restricted to family members and in-laws for I mean, I can't remember when that was a restriction. So
The only serious, the only serious thing that I can remember in the public hearing from the advocates of this state law was that we are too restrictive at 600 square feet and the state law is 1,000 square feet, and therefore it ought to be allowed to stand. We're going to be forced to do that.
Well, the the ARP put out a publication on three different types of ADUs, depending on what the usage was. And there, there, there is a problem with restricted square footage when you're talking about people that need three-foot doorways, clearances, turnarounds, and might need a a live-in aide. So there are different requirements. There is also, I think they also had an example for a single mom with a child. So then you're looking at a separate room. So there are some things to consider square footage wise, and I could certainly find a link to that if you guys wanted to look at it.
Yeah, I don't think this is a quick fix.
Right.
So I think we should take this to the selectmen. Just saying that we think we should be able to allow it, you know, continue to do our own regulation rather than relying on the state. And then we take the time to explore what we really want.
I mean, the only thing that I don't see in this letter, and I I know we've already voted on it, is a kind of positive approach. Like, there's not, there's not really a sentence in there, we want to, we want to, we want to regulate, we want to, you know, be able to do this for the town and not have to to buy into the state thing, but there's really not a sentence that's saying that we really want to kind of figure this out for the town and we're very supportive of the idea. And somehow I think that needs to be conveyed to the Board of Selectmen.
I would wholeheartedly agree.
If if you were a Senate, you could read this and not get the idea that we're going to let anything happen.
Do we need to rewrite the one that we already approved, or can we make modifications to this letter here to take into account the positive message that, and again, so maybe it's maybe it's it's too optimistic to think we can pass the regulation, but at least indicate that this is what we're working on and that we, you know, again, wholeheartedly agree, we just want to control it ourselves and we're working on it right now. Something like that. You know, can, do we have to redo the other one or can we just put that in here?
You already voted on that resolution and approved it. I would have to ask Bob D on whether or not you can that is done. It's been legally noticed that you, the zoning commission has opted to opt out by a 6-0 vote. That's done. As far as whatever message you want to convey to the first electionman through the letter, that that's a more workable document.
Yeah, I don't think you need to change the resolution. The resolution is about the regs.
Yeah.
You know, and and this document is the one that's you have some place
Well, I think
What did you write in the first couple of paragraphs?
I think the problem is everybody's a little uncomfortable with this draft. And why don't we redo the draft? Rework on it and come back and try to incorporate a more positive reflection of what the zoning commission does and is doing and will do to keep itself abreast of the needs of the community.
If this is okay with you, Mr. Chair, if anyone has sample language they want to include, they can always send.
Okay. And I'll work with Laura and we'll create a new draft of this recognizing the comments, that trying to recognize the comments that people have made here. Because we have a little time to do this. And I think it's important because I think the zone, the selectmen are going to get hit hard with the people who support the state statute. There's, you know, there's a grant, there's the Spirit Council got a $10,000 grant to advocate for the state statute.
Who got the grant?
It's to
Spirit Council.
At First Church, it's to explore the whole issue.
Of housing.
Of housing. So, you know, actually, that makes sense that we would, rather than, you know, commit to a date, that we would participate in that, because there's going to be a year, a year worth of meetings exploring this whole issue that, you know, after that
But there is issues about affordable housing, I thought.
It is, but this is part of it.
Yeah.
So maybe you can include a sentence on that, that, you know, will be, you know, interested in seeing what happens. We don't have to make the change yet until we see what what they that group, the Spirit Council and First Church come up with as far as recommendations.
Yeah, but I I think the point that you're making, Dave, well, and I think we've all circled around this. Well, we don't give enough weight to the fact that our our Board of Selectmen really don't, my experience is they know little and nothing about the zoning regulations and the process, very little. And that's not, I'm not trying to that I don't cast that as a, you know, I'm not trying to throw a rock at them, but my point is, as Dave says, they're going to get probably a lot of push. And and what do they have to respond with for information? They're going to have a memo from us.
That won't be all they have. There's also talk about town council attending this as well for when this this memo goes out. So Attorney D. Cresenza will be there in addition. So it's not going in cold.
Yeah, well, it's going to start out cold.
Yeah.
And so we would do ourselves a favor by giving a maximum effort to providing educational insight as Dave was suggesting.
Yeah, I agree. Include that list of other towns that are considering opting out as well. Because one of the things that that
Yeah.
Does is it knows that it's it's towns of all, of varying demographics. It's not all, you know, you know, the rich towns or whatever. It's it was a good cross-section there, showing that, you know, we're not alone in this.
Okay. We'll do that. And get back to you. I'm not sure that next meeting I will be here. So on the 7th of February.
Yeah.
I'm actually not going to be here next Monday either.
And I'm hoping to be in the next Monday. It's two months.
Oh.
It's two weeks.
Then I'll, then I'll be here, never mind.
Okay. Well, I I probably won't. But we'll do it for the next meeting. After that, we'll have this done. Okay, we'll send it, we'll get something in the Dropbox, too. All right, everybody, we reached the end of the road, I think, for this evening.
Okay.
For taking an extra time.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Thanks, guys. We went a long time tonight.
Yeah, I'll have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.